All right, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome. It is July 10th, Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners Work Session. I'm Aaron Mays. I represent District 3. On my left is Commissioner Bill Rippon. He represents District 1. On my right, Commissioner Kevin Cook, representing District 2. Good morning to both of you.
Good morning.
We've got our County Councilor Rich Eckert at the far end of the desk. Good morning, Rich.
Good morning.
And Jennifer Sauer, the star of the show today, at the microphone over there. So, let's get started. First item is the discussion of the 2026 Capital Improvement Plan. So, let's just dive on in.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a quick summary of our capital improvement plan. It is a five-year plan of the upcoming capital improvement projects for Shawnee County, regardless of the funding. So, we have just a couple of summary slides at the beginning here to summarize what's being requested by fund, as well as what's being requested by departments and by year. So, we have a total over the next five years of $167,342,000 worth of capital improvement projects that are included in our plan. As you can see...
Yes.
Yeah?
Please note that has not been approved, and so that...
No. This is a request and just, and again, it is a five-year plan. This is, this is, none of this has been approved as of this time.
Again, these are identifying possible projects?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's being reported, that the county is not committing to spending $167 million over the next five years?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Nope. Sorry. Okay. So, what is being requested at this moment? And again, it's a, it's our best estimate, looking forward five years. And we all know, we're probably all not doing what we thought we were going to do exactly five years ago. So, we've got Solid Waste, looking at about $7 million worth of projects. Public Works is looking at just short of $54 million. The Weed Department is looking at $400,000. The Gage Park Sales Tax has $8.5 million. Capital Outlay itself is looking at $23 million worth of requests. And potential new debt or unidentified funding is looking at $74 million worth of requests. So, broken down by department, this is how that looks. We have predominantly, not surprisingly, Public Works. Most of those are infrastructure-type requests for roads, bridges, and maintenance. Parks and Rec has forty, almost $47 million worth of requests. And then it drops down to the Department of Corrections at 25.5. And then Community Corrections and the Sheriff's Department at between $10 and $12 million worth of requests. Specific to just the Capital Outlay Fund, which is the, the fund that is funded by our General Fund, we have just short of $23 million in requests. And this is over the full five-year period. Predominantly, this is, you'll see the Sheriff's Office has a little over $10 million in requests, and then it drops down to the Elections Office with three, and then everybody else is under $2 million. So, from there, I'd like to take you to our special funded projects. So, the Solid Waste Fund is, and let me just also throw out there, sorry, this, we are not planning on voting on anything today. This is, we're just trying to get guidance from you so that we can come up with a plan that we can pull together and have presented next week at our official commission meeting so that then we could potentially have our CIP plan for 2026 in place. So, specific to 2026 is kind of what we're...
Can we stop?
Yeah.
Again, I know that the commission is very much familiar, but just for those that are maybe watching at home, or those that are reporting on this, why are we doing these five-year plans? What's the purpose of this? And how does, how does this help you, or how does this help our departments?
Yep. So, several years ago, we stopped looking at just one year's worth of our capital improvements, just so that we could have a better forward-reaching idea of what our future costs were going to be, so that we didn't get surprises by a $3 million project that just appeared out of nowhere, and we had no plan in place for how we were going to accommodate that in the budgets. We do not have a desire to have a spike in our mill levy ever to, to try and fund some of these projects. We want to get an idea of what potential bonding opportunities we have. We try and find a way that we can prioritize our projects so that we can be spending the money on what both the department is seeing as a need, as well as what the commission is prioritizing for each year.
All right. Thank you. I just want to make sure that we sometimes slow down and...
No, no, you're good.
We're all talking a lingo, but...
Sorry. I know, and I know today, everybody knows today is a long day, so I'm probably trying to hurry, and I shouldn't, so...
It's a good planning tool.
It is a good planning tool.
That's what it is.
Some great person who now sits on a commission brought this up once.
Kissing up.
So, the first, the first fund that we look at is the Solid Waste Fund. These are all funded from user fee funds, not taxpayer dollars. 100% user fee fund. So, the plan for Solid Waste is on the screen in front of you. He's looking at needing $1.6 million worth of equipment in 2026. A total of seven point, just short of 7.3 million over the five-year period. Did you want him to speak to any of these, or did you have any questions for him on any of these projects that are listed?
Any questions about Solid Waste?
I mean, I think it's explanation, but I mean, I don't know if there's anything that Bill has specific that we should really maybe put at the forefront of our radar or awareness, but these all seem very self-explanatory.
Yeah. I will tell you, if you look at prior plans, this year's is a bit of a re, is a bit of a rework for him. He, with a lot of the delays that he had in some of his equipment deliveries, he, he looked at everything afresh this year and really freshened up his five-year forecast.
Okay. I think we can move past that.
Very good. Here is our very large one. This is the Public Works. On the Public Works Funds, they have three primary sources other than the General Fund or the Cap Outlay Fund, and that is their Special Highway Bridge and Machinery Funds. They have an Infrastructure Fund, and then they also have some projects which are funded by the half-cent County Sales Tax. And so, he has fifty, as we said earlier, he is just short of $54 million over the next five years, of which about $10 million is, just short of $11 million is funded out of 2026, primarily from the Sales Tax Fund. And the largest project that's going on there in 2026 is projected to be the Northwest 46th Street project that is currently underway. Did you have any questions for Kurt on his projects?
Yeah, and maybe this was talked about the other day, but I forget. Kurt, on the Dump Truck Refresh, you've got $270,000 this year, but 120, 125 in future years. Are we just, is there a reason, are we buying an extra dump truck or a different type of dump truck this year? Again, we might have talked about it the other day, but there was a lot of information those days, so...
No, that's all right. I appreciate the ability to clarify. Okay. The difference is, for '26, because we're buying a paint truck, which is going to be approximately $400,000, I put all of the capital request, $300,000, on the paint truck for 2026, so the dump truck had zero capital dollars. But again, this is a five-year planning document, so in the following four years, I just assumed at this point that we would spend $150,000 each year of capital funds. So, what you're seeing is, I believe, the special machinery portion...
Yeah.
...of the, of the trucks. So, the total cost of the trucks for '26 through '30 is, is roughly $270,000 to $280,000.
Okay. All right, I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions on these funds and the projects that are funded, projected to be funded out of them for the next five years?
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
I think I'm good.
All right, thank you.
We have some departments who have specific equipment funds that are set aside. We had no requests listed for the DOC Safety Equipment Fund for this year or for the plan, but we did have a $400,000 request from the Weed Department out of their equipment fund for a potential building expansion for the Weed Department, scheduled for 2027. So, not specific for this upcoming budget year, but one of the out-years. Did you have any questions for John?
Questions on that?
Do you want to define where this money, I mean, is this money that's already in existence, or money that he hopes that may exist?
I believe it's a bit of both. Yes, he already, that fund carries a balance. I do not, I can't tell you today what that balance is off the top of my head. I can get you that information, though. And then each year, there is a statute that, that allows for us to transfer any of the remaining budgeted funds for the Weed Department over to this equipment fund. So, that is how it is funded. It gets its funding from the excess funds from the, from each year's budget.
Do you have the ability to also tell us how much is allocated presently in the Department of Corrections Safety Equipment Fund?
Yeah. Yeah. I can, not today, but yes, I can give you the balance of all of these funds.
With both of those funds, if the county believed that there was a better and greater use of those funds, we would be able to zero them out and move them somewhere else?
I don't know that we can for the Weed Department, because there is a statute that specifically puts them there, but for the DOC Safety Equipment Fund, yes. That is money that the commission allowed to be moved into this fund. They request any transfer into the fund, and you guys approve it, which means you could also approve transferring it back out.
Okay. Again, I think that it would be good if you could get us a comprehensive list of all of our different funds, and what is allocated by statute versus what is at the discretion of the commission.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And it might be good to know if there's any side notes on what's been already allocated to, because I know that, you know, I think back to the airport, when we set that money aside for the commercial air service...
Reserved it.
Even though it's, we're not spending it, but it's kind of set aside and reserved for that one thing already.
Correct.
So, that kind of stuff would be good to know also.
Yes.
Any further comments on this?
No.
Okay. Next up, please.
Sorry, making a note, because I don't want to forget to get that back to you. Parks and Rec is our next category that we talk about. They have a few different funding sources. They have a Parks and Rec Building Maintenance Funding. They have a Parks and Rec Revolving Fund. And then they have the Gage Park Sales Tax Fund. They made no, they listed no projects out of the first two funding sources for the next five years. But then for the Gage Park Sales Tax Fund, they do have a few projects that they have identified as potential projects over the next five years. Did you have questions for Tim to go over these projects?
I believe he talked about these during his budget presentation.
He did.
Go ahead.
Oh, this is all, I was looking at my screen. Oh, you did that? Did you just?
Yes. Sorry. Did you want to go back smaller?
Yeah.
Trying to shrink it back.
No, that's all right. This was just the Gage Park Sales Tax here.
Yes.
Okay.
This is the specific, this is the...
As it says in bold letters.
Yeah. That's the sales tax portion, or the Gage Park portion of the Gage Park Improvement Authority Sales Tax.
All right.
So, I guess out of curiosity, you know, how much did we spend there this year out of that amount of money? Because, I mean, this is, it's $6 million next year, but I don't think that we've collected $6 million yet.
No, we have not. The, with the coordination with the Counselor's Office and Parks and Rec, we are working on a memorandum of understanding between Shawnee County, the Audit Finance Department, and Parks and Rec, so that we can get moving on some of these larger projects, so they don't have to wait for the sales tax. So, basically, we would be giving the Sales Tax Fund a loan from, from the rest of our funding, so that they can get moving on these. More than likely, the payments out aren't going to be, these are just, we would be going into a project that would be for $3.5 million, and the majority of those funds would not be paid out during 2026. It would just be an obligation. If that makes sense? I mean, you'd go into a...
I mean, I think it makes sense, but I guess I don't understand why we wouldn't just, because the playground renovation's already underway, right? So, we're, we're working on that currently. We've already expended quite a bit on that, haven't we? Or Tim, why don't you come up here?
Tim Loret, Parks and Recreation Department? Yeah, we are underway. I don't have those totals right now off the top of my head on how much we've spent, but I guess to answer, if I'm understanding your question, yeah, we would spend the money. We just don't think we'll have enough money to do all the projects that we'd like to accomplish. I mean, it would take quite a bit of time if we only spent the money that we were, had collected.
Okay. I mean, and I get that. I guess the Carousel Building renovation, rather than, you know, moving money from the General Fund into the Gage Park and then getting reimbursed for it, why wouldn't we just do the engineering and everything in '26, and then do the construction in '27, and then just move that money to the next year? If, I mean, if that's actually probably when it's going to be spent, why, why wouldn't we budget it that way? I guess I don't understand.
Well, that project specifically, we have to be out of Big Gage Shelter by January 1 of 2027. We want this project completed prior to that, so that we can have summer camps and other things, and that's in that location. We have a little leeway, because obviously, summer camps won't start until the summer, but we don't think we'll have enough money to complete that project, even if we were doing it in 2027. Once we deplete funds from, from, from the Gage Park Sales Tax to do the Playland Project, and then start on the Carousel Project, there's no way. We, we, we get about little less than $2 million a year is what we've been averaging. So, there wouldn't be enough funds in there to complete that in 2027, the Carousel Project.
So, the Big Gage Shelter House, I mean, have we, has, has the zoo told us, like, why do we have a deadline? Like, I guess...
Right.
Like, where, where is this coming from? Because no, the zoo has not approached me about it. I know, I've heard people say anecdotally that they want to take that over, but I don't know. Like, I haven't received any notice from them that they have a date certain.
Well, we have met with the zoo and the city as, about this issue. Just as a reminder, Big Gage Shelter is on city property, and they reached out to us, to the department, asking, essentially, they wanted to move into it at the end of last year. And we explained to them that that, that wouldn't work for us. You know, we've got, we need time. And there's always been sort of a, I guess, a loose understanding that everything on that side of the park would eventually go to the zoo as they expanded operations, and this would be the first domino in that move. But, yeah, I mean, there's, it's just been a series of conversations and agreements between them, us, and the Gage Park Improvement Authority. They don't have any authority in this matter, but they are helping us fund, they've agreed to put in $150,000 for design services for that new facility. So, they're trying to help out, but they're not the one calling shots.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I believe that our County Counselor might have some additional insight.
Okay.
We don't have a formal agreement to move out of the Shelter House. And when we reviewed the 2011 merger agreement or consolidation agreement, while it does remain upon city property, and it does so because of the deed restrictions with the original Gage family, there's nothing in the document that says that the city has a right to take anything back. So, this deadline that we're talking about, I would summarize it as, other entities have had, have asked nicely, and we have nicely responded, this is a possible date. But when, if you ask me if that's a hard deadline, I would say, no, it is not. We control the deadline.
Okay.
And I have said that out loud to city officials.
Okay. And I guess, are we also in the same boat there with the Helen Hawker property, those three buildings there?
Yes, we would eventually be in that same situation.
But not on the same timeline?
Absolutely not. Yeah. There's been no discussion timeline-wise of, of that move.
Tim, I'm just throwing out a question. I generally will tell people that I have, hopefully have an idea of what the answer is before I ask the question, but in this one, I don't. What would happen if, instead of trying to get this rushed through and built, I'm concerned with the state of construction costs and potentially, construction cost going up exponentially with tariffs being unresolved, and this number being maybe not accurate until maybe some more global things get resolved? If we have to be out of the Big Gage Shelter House, couldn't we just go rent a couple of mobile classrooms or mobile trailers like you would see at a lesser cost as our temporary shelter for those summer camps? Again, it's not the most attractive, it's not the most beautiful, but if we needed something temporarily while we're getting the Carousel design, while we're getting everything built, just to be accommodating, at a lesser cost? I mean, I would think that, again, a rental of a mobile classroom would be far less than trying to throw this together very quickly.
Well, obviously, anything's possible. I mean, we could do that. In, in my mind, I think we've done a lot of work already on this. We've got some preliminary designs. We kind of know what we want, what we think will work for our needs. So, I don't necessarily view this as us rushing this. I think we've been working on it. We're, we're outright now for the construction manager at risk, RFP, on this project. I can't speak to the tariff situation and how that's going to impact it. You could be right. We may, we may get into this and decide we need to wait, but I think, I think we need to move forward before we know that answer. And if we get to the point where we're like, this just doesn't make sense, because the tariffs have made such an impact that we need to wait, then we do what you're saying, which I think we could, we could do at any time. I mean, that would be relatively easy to accomplish.
And I guess my other question is, Commissioner Mays, what's your concern with if we were borrowing against money that we know will come in eventually? We're borrowing from the reserves to, I mean, for the Gage Park Improvement?
Let me give some perspective about the, how large the borrowing would be, for this is how I'm seeing it. We currently have cash in the, this fund, $3.5 million. Then we have a $1 million encumbrance for the current work that's being done in, that we have contracted already, which leaves us with about $2.5 million today. We're going to get in about another $1 million for the rest of this year, so that would leave us at about $3.5 million at the end of 2025. We would get another $2 million-ish in 2026, which would leave us at about $5.5 million, to which there is a plan of starting contract of about $6 million, which would mean it would be a very small negative balance, is what I'm looking at, at the end of 2026. If any, it could be a small balance. And it all just depends on what comes in on sales tax. As you saw yesterday, we had a great month for sales tax in 2026, and, and so who knows of, in June. We don't know what's going to happen on sales tax, but that's what we have to wait, and that's what we're trying to hedge against. And so, that's why I'm like, I don't think, I don't want you to think this is a $6 million borrow. This is a minimal borrow, to try and get some of these projects moving, so that the taxpayer, the way I'm seeing it, I don't like sitting on, we're, we're collecting taxpayers' dollars. I, I think it's a good idea to get moving on some of these projects, so people can see why they are paying these, the sales tax increases. So, that's, that's where, when Tim and I were having discussions, that's what we were saying, is it's not a huge borrow ask. It's not the $6 million. I don't want you to think that that's what we're at all talking about.
Yeah. I, I also, though, I mean, and that gives me a little bit more comfort, but at the same time, I don't know that I want that account to be at a zero balance all the time either. Because, you know, I was in Gage Park when a tree got hit by lightning and it crashed down. That could easily take out a Shelter House that we'll have to fix it, you know? And so, I mean, that, that kind of thing, I don't want to be at a zero balance, and so, I guess...
Yeah, well, no, I...
It did, it does look like, when I was looking at this, I'm like, okay, well, this is $3.5 million that we're going to be transferring out of reserves and then hoping to get back, and probably will. But, you know, you miss out on interest for that and, and that kind of thing as well, so...
I, I just want to be extremely transparent here, because my thoughts might differ slightly from Jennifer's, but I don't want to be at a zero balance. And, and as I showed in my budget presentation, I've got a lengthy list of projects and things that we want to try to accomplish, more so, you know, not just this playground project and the Carousel. So, I could see us going into debt, you know, by, more than that. That's part of that MOU that we, Jennifer was talking about, would be how we outlined how far we could go into debt, how much we're paying back annually on that debt, and setting the limits, you know, so that all of us understand, as we move forward, here's the framework with, which we're working. That's, that's all we're trying to accomplish. And then we can decide, once we have that document in place, just how many projects we can accomplish annually, or, you know, in that five, 10-year period.
Okay.
Commissioner, I do think we could charge interest back against that fund as well.
We, we do.
Yeah. So, I don't, I don't think we could miss, we would probably just take what the bond issue is, you know, the Chicago price or the New York price, and just apply that as the interest rate.
Okay.
To answer, I guess, Commissioner Cook, or at least give my opinion. I remember when Helen Hawker Theater needed an office space, and they picked up one of the temporary housing units that they had from Washburn University that they used after the tornado. We had that thing out there for like 30-some years.
Yeah, it was bad.
And the floor was so bad, you could almost, there were places you didn't walk or put anything heavy. What I guess what I'm saying is, sometimes these temporary units end up being almost permanent, and there's not much to look at. I would discourage going that direction for...
I, I understand and agree. I'm just trying to think of what other...
I appreciate that.
...alternatives we have, if we can't get it constructed.
Yeah.
I mean, my fear is, you're going to have a clash between a construction ongoing with the Carousel Building and the zoo taking over Big Gage, and we get caught in a crunch where we don't have it done, and that we're out, and we need a place to have our summer camps continue. Our summer camps are a very vital program to our community, and vital to part of the programming and is money that's brought in by the Parks and Recreation, so...
You know, I think if the zoo's all right with the schedule, we could probably make that happen, I think.
Quite honestly, we're looking, as of today, we're a little less than two years. You know, we've got all of next year and... You know, we've got all of next year and up until, you know, June of 2027 before, you know, camp starts.
All of that sounds fine, but it's never enough time.
Hey, Tim, real quick, will Playland be done by the time the Carousel project starts? Because I don't want to have all of the kids' activities in Gage Park under construction at the same time.
Well, it won't, it won't be completely finished. Our target date for the playground reopening would be spring break of next year. I think all of the equipment will be in. Really, the driving factor on when it'll be done is the safety surfacing. You know, we're putting pour-in-place and a little bit of turf. Turf's not a big deal, but the pour-in-place, it's got to be over 50 degrees for so many days before we can apply that surfacing. So that's, that'll be, as soon as we can get that in, that'll dictate how soon we can open it. But I think before the end of the year, all the equipment will be installed.
Okay. Any questions for Parks and Rec?
And just also to clarify, just over, I just want to make sure, I know all you know this, but because something, a project is approved today, does not, is not the same as coming before the commission for approval on a purchase. This is a funding project, like it's approving the potential funding out of 2026 for these projects. The official approval comes forward in a VCC meeting as we're getting ready to go out for RFP. And all of, so nothing is getting contracted without coming back before the commission again for those. So there's no obligations being made as far as financial commitments to, on contracts today.
Further questions?
Okay.
This year, we have nobody requesting to fund any capital improvements out of their general fund, and at this point, there was nothing listed for being funded out of the roofs and parking lots fund for 2026. I'm sure whenever we, when Kurt and the facilities director meet and have their annual discussion on which roofs and parking lots are looking like they're most in need for the year, they might come up with some projects that would need to be funded out of '26. We usually try and smooth that out over the year so we don't have every roof coming due at the same time. Which brings us to our, let me, I'm going to fast forward over the next two tabs just to get to our debt service.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
Okay, one quick question about the parking lots. Does that include roads too, or is that just?
This is just.
I mean, like if we had a, say, a road in Gage Park, it's not, it's not like a big county project, but it's.
No, no, and historically, historically, this has been used for not Parks and Rec roofs and parking lots because they do have their own special building maintenance fund so that, this was originally created to be roofs and parking lots for all of the departments that don't already have a special building maintenance fund. This was to try and catch some of those so that they didn't show up on our capital outlay and gobble up a good chunk of our annual capital outlay.
So if we had, like, say we had to replace Zoo Parkway through Gage Park, that would be, that would just be a capital improvement.
I would assume that would come through one of the two Parks and Rec, either the bill, well, that one would probably come, 3R? I don't.
Yes, I mean, a project, it just depends on, what on cost. But, you know, those, like mill and overlay projects that we do now for different areas, different small parking lots and different drives and things are generally coming out of our 3R.
Okay. I was just trying to define what our parking, where that ends, you know?
Yeah. We've got a lot, we've got a lot of parking lots.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So I'm going to skip over the next two tabs, which have to do with our capital outlay fund as well as our debts and service and grants, just to talk a little bit about where we sit with our debt service for Shawnee County. This is showing where we, I have information for where we were in '24 and '25. Our debt service for '24 and '25 was over $7 million. Going into 2026, we dipped down under $7 million, and we're going to see a substantial drop-off between '26 and '27, and then again, between '27 and '28 for our debt service. So we have upcoming debt drop-off in, yes, go ahead.
Do you have the tabs for 2023 or prior years? Can you open that up just a little bit? I think that it would be good if we could just, again, see where our debt has been historically, or what kind of, because I think that historically, we've tried to remain under 10% of our total budget with debt service.
Correct, and with our budget growing as it does each year due to inflation and increases in pay, our percentage has dropped lower and lower each year in addition to that. So in addition to the debt service falling off, our budgets are growing, so our debt service percentage is a much smaller percentage of our, of our overall budget.
I think that's an important thing for the public to know, is that, or what our percentage of debt is and where it, the amount of the debt is over the, maybe the last, you know, three or four years.
Yeah, I don't, I apparently don't have anything prior to '23 on this, but.
That's fine, all right.
No, but we have, I mean, I think, pointing this out, since 2023, we've cut 2 million, over $2 million of debt service.
Correct, yes.
That's, I feel like a good thing.
It is a good thing, and I know we have a, so I'm showing you this because we do have some potential needs for future debt, so that's why I wanted to show where we're coming from. So although it looks like we have some large amounts of debt coming, that is a true statement, however, we also have a large amount of debt that is falling, has fallen off and is going to continue to fall off. So let me go to our 2026 request for capital outlay and new debt. And just bear in mind, when some, when people were asking for new debt, I believe most of them just put it in for '26 so they could make the ask. I'm speaking for everyone, I'm hoping that's what everybody was doing, because we are showing $36 million of ask for new debt for 2026. And I believe the, the idea there was listing items that had been mentioned and letting the commission know that these are still needs and they are aware that there is not money in the capital outlay fund for these larger projects. But then, for the capital outlay itself, we do have a request of $6,414,850. In my budget request for the general expenses, I requested increasing our cap outlay budget to $2.5 million. That is where we were a couple of years ago. We dropped down to two point, a little over 2.1 last year. So this is, I included in my budget request to, to get it back to the 2.5 so that we could try and get some of these projects funded and moving along, or some of them completed. So how this process works is when all the departments make their CIP presentations during their departmental budget requests, the commissions hear a little bit about all of the cap outlay projects and score them according to what they believe their priorities should be for Shawnee County. We average out those scores, and that's what you see on the priority score tab. And so from there, we then just sort the list by priority score so that the commissioners have a bit of an idea on how they're scored overall across all three commissioners. And we can look at prioritizing as you guys are looking at potentially funding them. So, just looking at the time. You want to start at the top, at the top priority? We have two projects that are, both got a high priority score of one from all commissioners, and that was for the election express poll book replacements, as well as the Smith Detection Machine replacements.
Can we talk about this election stuff just as a whole?
Yes.
I know that in the past, we have bonded elections equipment.
Yes.
We've known about these needs coming down the pike for at least the last couple of years. We're now at a point where it's become a necessity. We're talking about a total of about $3 million. Do we have other resources that we could draw from other than our mill levy?
Yes, the total is $3,44,000 for the four projects that are, that I have highlighted here. One of the, or one of the options that we have been kind of tossing around is whether or not this would be, because it's not a good fit for bonding, because our bonds go for 15 to 20 years and getting them paid back. These items will not still have a life at 15 or 20 years. They should not have a life at 15 or 20 years, or they will not be reliable. So.
I don't know, Andrew makes things work way longer than I think that they have a useful life.
I think 15 and 20 will be pushing it on these. He's skilled, but. So bonding is really a bad fit for these types of items. We were looking at seeing whether or not we could fund them out of our reserves. That, to me, seems like a better fit for these purchases that, that wouldn't affect our, we wouldn't need to, it wouldn't take off all of the cap outlay, it would allow the expense to be made out of funds that we already have on hand, and we could make that purchase, we could fund them that way.
Do we have excess reserves at this time that we would be able to use?
We currently have excess reserves over our 20% goal. So our goal is to have between 20 and 25% of our general fund. And we currently do have excess reserves in that area that are not obligated. We.
They're covering the extra pay period.
We have, we will be moving additional excess reserves to cover an extra pay period. So right now, we have three, two already official obligations for, for reserves. One of those was money that was set aside a few years ago for future increases. That was originally at $3.9 million. We used a bit of that for the 2025 budget for some union increases that were given in 2025. Then we have an additional $3 million that was set aside for the airport, for potential obligation that we would have over the next three years for that. And then I, I don't have officially have approved yet, but one of the items in the budget for this year is to use our excess funds from 2024 to go towards a 27th pay period that is coming up in 2026. So that would prevent a spike in our budget, in our mill levy for a 27th pay period, which is an anomaly that happens with bi-weekly pay every 11 years. And 2026 is that 11th year. So we will have a spike by having an extra payroll in that budget year, and to alleviate that, we are looking to use some of our reserves for that. So additional to that, I think Andrew also had talked about during his presentation that he was researching some other potential funding sources. I don't know what those are, but he could probably speak to those, or Jake, one of the two.
I'd love to hear about that. It seems like election equipment and things like that that are passed down, the responsibilities passed to us from the state government, which is passed down from the federal government. It would be nice if they'd help out a little bit with some of this. Is there not grant funding available?
Not that I'm aware of on that. And what we did do at the end of last year, we had excess money from our 2024 budget. We asked that that be put into a project fund. I want to say that number is somewhere in the realm between $130,000 and $150,000. So as you, as you all are aware, we've been talking about this for probably the last four years. The equipment that we're currently using, they were purchased in 2015. The poll, those were by the manufacturer essentially given a 10-year lifespan. And so we, right now, equipment is still working. We're going to probably squeeze an 11th year out of that, maybe even a 12th year. But we know that it's coming, that's why we have been talking with all of you about this. The poll books that we're currently using, we brought those into service in 2021. Those are essentially a 60-month or a five-year time. And so with this, all this equipment come, came through the same vendor, so unfortunately, we can't do some of it this year, some of it next year. It needs to all come in at the same time so it all works together, for lack of a better term.
I might add a couple of things just to think about as well. Kind of an extraordinarily complex space at the moment because the executive order to the EAC was that barcodes not exist in the future on existing ballots. So the EAC has until September the 21st to come up with a ruling.
EAC means?
The Election Assistance Commission, who kind of helps coordinate the VBSG standards. Those, and I, I believe it's the voter, voter veri, voter verified guidelines or.
Commissioner Mase is Googling.
Yeah, it's voluntary voter system guidelines, I believe, and that is currently at 1.0 for the equipment that we have. A lot of, a lot of manufact, to further complexify things, some manufacturers are moving forward with 2.0, and there are others that are trying to understand and determine what the 2.1 standards are going to look like, partly complexified by the executive order. Additionally, there are some manufacturers of electronic poll books that are working to build an entirely different system that isn't based on either an Apple product or a Microsoft product. So there's a lot of complexity to all the different pieces, which is why we, I think we've told you that over the last few months, that we know it's going to take a great deal of extensive look at, at changes that could occur. So again, I just kind of want to emphasize, the numbers that we've put together, we feel like have been accurate, but it is extraordinarily difficult to, to be certain about that. So I just wanted to make sure that we talk about that out loud and that it is complex. So I guess keep that in the back of your mind, that I really can't crystal ball what's going to happen. But I do think later this year, depending on what the EAC does, if there's any lawsuits around that, if barcodes are or are not a part of ballots going forward. And again, in Shawnee County, we do a lot of paper-based ballots. I mean, we, all ballots are on paper, but our ADA Express Vote, the smaller piece of paper, if you use the electronic touch machine to fill out your ballot, there are ballot barcodes on there. So I don't know how that's going to end. I think that our security processes and procedures and the testing that we do here, which is required by both state, state law as well as just our internal processes, I feel very comfortable that it works and works well. But there are manufacturers that are moving towards an OCR, optical character recognition, and some other fairly high-end approaches to that instead of barcode. So not to get super deep into the weeds, but just to let you know, we will try to keep you apprised as we get a sense of where we think some of that is going. I don't believe that it's going to affect existing equipment. That's been my number one concern, is if we need to communicate that the 1.0 certified equipment is going to be affected by that. I don't believe that it is, but again, interesting and challenging times as it relates to trying to anticipate some of those changes at both the state and federal level.
So obviously, technology's changed is really, really fast right now. I mean, just in the last couple of years, there's been a lot changing. I still, I, it's hard to spend $3 million when you don't know what next year's going to look like. Is there any kind of a, like a lease program that this, because these all come from the same vendor, where, you know, we're, in essence, renting the equipment, and then they bring us whatever the newest technology is when the time comes?
We asked that question as part of our RFP process in 2015. Vendors are, I would say extraordinarily not excited. Vendors are, I would say extraordinarily not excited about that approach. And what we found is that we can own it for 10 years for the same price as they would lease it to us for three years. So I think their pricing model is not supportive of that approach. So we've looked at that, we've talked about it. We've visited with Secretary of State's office about some of the more expensive, slightly lesser-used equipment, maybe being, you know, rented on a temporary basis through that office. But it just doesn't really seem to be a model that the marketplace is excited about. Maybe that's the best way to say it.
I'm not really that excited about it, but any other questions?
So we can't bond for it. We know that it's, we're in a tight budget year. Reserves may be the only thing, we have no option on whether or not we get the equipment, unless we go to completely paper ballots and it's 1978 all over again. But, so reserves may be the best worst option we have.
I think that's possible. Again, I think that's kind of a policy decision for you. I can give you my ideas on it, but it is important to have systems that help enhance the security and the verification of making sure that each voter gets the correct ballot. That's probably my single biggest concern about going away from electronic poll books is. What they have really done for Shawnee County is made it easier for voters, I believe, and for election workers to verify that they are in fact getting the correct ballot. Because with those tickets that we use and the barcode system and the numbering of ballots, you can't identify an individual voter and track it back to a paper ballot. But the voter can at least see if we've got their name and information correct. They can see what we are telling them on that ticket, what is in fact their correct ballot style number. So it's an easy way. I think it's actually made elections much easier for voters to get comfortable that we know who they are, we have their address correct, and they can see what their correct ballot style number is. Additionally, we can also get some visibility into how things are going election day. I think it's also important for the, for the public to know that electronic poll books are an entirely separate system. They're really a voter registration system. They have nothing to do with tabulation. They're an entirely different system. And while they, while there is some compatibility and some file transfers that you do at the end of the day, just to verify everything, they are a separate system. And they work, they do work with it, but they are in fact a secure separate system for a reason. I think sometimes the public does get confused about electronic poll books and calls, and I think somehow thinks that they relate to the, to the tabulation, but they don't. They really are just verifying in compliance with state law that you know who the voter is, they've followed the registration process, you've got their name correct, and you're, just a way to verify that they're in the system, they're ready to vote, and that they are in fact getting the correct ballot. Again, I'm getting a little deep in policy, I know you're trying to talk about dollars, but I do think it would be difficult to go backwards, because one of the things that I think we did, and I think did fairly well, was work closely with vendors. We do have a history in Shawnee County, because we seem to be out in the lead on a lot of these cycles for election equipment. So we have a history of working closely with vendors to try to improve the products. We were the second, I believe we were the second county in the United States to have electronic poll books. So we were very much on the forefront of that. Part of the reason that we did that was, we knew that some ballots had been handed out incorrectly prior to me coming in, and I was really working to try to figure out how to make sure we didn't have that problem again. And I think they've been very good at that.
I appreciate the work that's been done by the Elections Office and the, but I think the point that Jennifer has made is also valid. We bonded equipment. We, the bond is still getting paid off, and the equipment is no longer functional. So bonding's not appropriate. So we're paying off stuff that's already being outsourced.
Yeah, we're, yeah, it's just, it's a, it's a bad, I mean, we're not even, that's going to be some of the debt that falls off in the next couple of years. So by the time we're purchasing new ones, we're still paying off the old ones. I did want to tell you, just, sorry, my papers were behind me. Estimated, because our financials are still in the middle of being audited, but the estimated uncommitted general fund balance that we have at the end of '24 is going to be $42 million. So that's where we're going to be sitting for our reserves. And then our general fund budget for '25 is 140, right under $146 million, which means our, our fund balance goals would be to be between 29 and 36.5 for our reserves. So we have a little extra, and that's, so just some perspective now. Does it say 42.1? Subtract $3 million from that, because in 2025 then, we made the commitment for the $3 million, so that we're really sitting at 39.1 at this moment in time. So we're at 39.1, and our goal is between 29 and 36.5. And that includes the estimated end-of-year excess of the 3.7 million. So I don't know if that answered any questions. We do have a, like I said, that is a large chunk of, it's almost half of our cap outlay request for 2025, 2026 is the elections equipment.
So, yeah, one more question. What are other counties doing? I mean, I know that you talk with the other election commissioners around the state. Are they all faced with the same issue?
They are. I think some of them that have had more recent purchases were able to use some federal dollars. I believe ARPA money may have funded some things in Johnson County. I'm not certain how Wyandotte County handled it. Yeah, I think larger counties either try to save up a portion of it, to the extent they can, but I'm not certain how most of them have funded the poll book portion for election equipment typically. It's a larger county, there's either a federal funding source, which I think was kind of an anomaly, that the ARPA money, like I said, Johnson County used. I'm not sure much beyond that. Douglas County tries to save up as much as they can, and they may actually save money along toward their election equipment.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I don't want to be just so far off track or out in the weeds, but Wyandotte County, don't they have, like, far fewer polling places than Shawnee County has? Which means they don't need as much equipment as Shawnee County uses? And our alternative would be, we could cut our polling places, but then we're going to be increasing lines, we're going to be increasing voting time, we're going to have issues with people maybe potentially filing lawsuit for not making places available. Isn't that our trade-off in how many polling places we have?
I think so, and it's a little more complex than that in some ways. In that if you use the touchscreen devices, which some of the large counties prefer to use, you have to purchase quite a few more of them, because people are busy, you know, using the screen. The screen gets used for five to 10, maybe 15 minutes. Whereas when we're here, we're pretty much a paper-based county, and then we use the ADA touchscreen as an ADA device, plus those that wish to use it at first time. So you're correct, I think we've got the most efficient model generally for how to purchase equipment. But just remember, if you go to using a lot more touchscreens, they're expensive, and you have to have quite a few more for each polling place. Which is part of, I think, why we try to have as many election day polling places as possible.
But our alternative is, we could save money on equipment by cutting the amount of polling places we have available to the public, right?
You could, although I still think at the end of the day, you would then have to have larger, just, just to keep people from having to stand in line, you would have to have other options available that would probably eat up a large number. It'd be a similar number.
So you're balancing trade-off?
Correct.
You're going to have to have larger facilities that are ADA compliant? I mean, we already struggle, as it is, finding the locations that we have that are ADA compliant with all of the different amenities that we would need, so.
I think that's accurate.
I mean, we don't want to go back to the snowstorm of 2014?
I don't think anyone's excited about that idea.
With one polling place?
No.
That was not a good look for us?
That was extraordinarily difficult, because I think, as you recall, the forecast was 20 inches of snow. So trying to predict a route that would be open while the governor was telling everyone to stay home, or saying, "Get out and vote." So it was, that was a tricky time.
Andy, we're not making any binding decisions today?
Would you like to hear from the Sheriff's Department for about the Smith Detection Machine? Sir, it's just $60,000.
Commissioner Mays, it is 10 o'clock. Do you want to stand, or do you want to take a break?
Let's just, this is, I feel like, a good spot. Let's take a five-minute break. So we'll stand at ease for five minutes. So we were about to head into the Sheriff's.
The non-election cap outlay items. The sheriff has a request for Smith Detection Machine replacement for $60,000. I believe they're here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. We're the Sheriff's Office. I know we talked about it a little bit at our presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Any questions?
Any of the grant money that we've announced in the paper going to be able to be used for it?
I don't believe so. I think the criteria for the grant is more narrow than that.
Okay. I just, there was a good announcement about grant money coming potentially to the Sheriff's Office and so...
We are continuing to look, obviously, for all options that we can for any and all of the equipment that we have purchased that we need to make, and we will continue to do that. We've explored grants over the years. We're taking a little bit more hard look at the grants that we have that could potentially be available.
The next on the list is the IT Department with a request for IT Network Distribution Switch Replacement for $70,000 in 2026. And I believe Mark should still be here.
He's trying to fill a vacant position. This is, kind of hate to say, it's kind of our, every two years, we have this request. This money is slated to actually replace some switches at one of our offices that we put in about 10 years ago for the core connection back to the courthouse. We have over 200 switches throughout the county that we use this money to go replace when they're aging out and need replacement.
And you said we have over 200. How many is this for?
This will replace, definitely replace two switches we have. It's at our Elections Office. I've got them in redundancy for obvious reasons. It will replace those and then replace some of our smaller access switches throughout the county.
Okay. Any questions?
Okay.
Next on the list, just going down the list in priority order, is the Public Works Paint Striping Truck for $300,000.
I believe we've already talked about that.
Yeah, great.
We have, the DOC has included a work crew building fire detection system for $55,000. And I believe this is fire detection system that used to be incorporated with some, with the rest of theirs that got separated in one of the previous upgrades that they did on the fire detection system. Is that right?
Brian, you discussed this during the budget as well.
Facilities has the next two projects that are listed. One of them is an additional $250,000 to go towards the courthouse restroom renovations. In 2025, they were awarded $250,000 of the 2025 cap outlay, and this would be seeking the last half of the funding for that. Additionally, the next item is the JP Lewis Front Entry Floor Replacement for $78,000. And I don't believe they spoke about these items during their...
Well, and I believe that when we did the...
It said doors.
What's that?
Didn't it say doors before?
On the JP Lewis?
Yeah.
The floor, yeah, it's just that entryway flooring, the tiles in bad shape.
Okay.
But on the restroom renovations, though, I mean, that was something that we more or less promised when we voted on it before, that it was, they wanted half a million dollars, and we told them we'd give them $250,000 now and $250,000 later.
I believe that was the discussion we had last year, was that we only really had $250,000 left out of last year's, but the project probably wouldn't begin until further down the line, which is exactly how it's played out. So we haven't hit the need for that second $250,000 yet, but we are just getting ready to get started on the real work for those renovations.
Okay. And the people that work in the courthouse, they still want those bathrooms redone, right?
I don't, I don't work in the courthouse, and I would like the bathrooms redone, so...
I think our treasuring clerk...
Yeah, they're back there, nodding their heads, yeah.
Let's see. The next item on the list is an item that our office presents, and that is for the small capital outlay projects. We ask for $100,000 each year for those items that don't meet the threshold of being $50,000, but do meet the threshold of being a capital outlay item. And for many of our departments, the majority of their budget, and by majority, I mean 90-plus percent of their budget, is for personnel only. So they do not have the funds to be able to fund any type of a capital outlay in their own budget. So we create this item. We follow up in November, ask what the needs are for the next year for anything that wasn't be, wasn't able to be funded out of people's budgets that they still have for small items. We have filled the 100,000 every single year, so I believe that need is still there.
Questions?
No.
Okay.
The next item is from Parks and Rec, and it's for the quad field at Bettis. It's for the turf replacement for that portion of their facility. Other portions of the Bettis facility have been upgraded to turf, but these quad fields have not yet.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Sheriff, how old are the old fields? Do we, the old turf?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe we're in our 16th year with that turf now.
16th year, and they have not been replaced.
Right.
They're wearing through, though, in certain places.
Yeah, they're pretty bad.
They're pretty thin, yeah.
They're wearing out.
There's actually a step down when you come out of the dugouts.
And we have, you know, and Shawnee Heitz uses one of those fields for their games.
Yeah, they do.
Did they contribute anything to that?
They did originally.
Not the quad fields.
But, right, not, not these fields.
Okay.
But, but they have contributed over, over the history of our relationship.
And this is just baseball? This doesn't, this doesn't pertain to the soccer field at all?
This does.
Oh, it does?
Yeah. That's part of what we're requesting is, no, I'm sorry, the soccer field is, is done. We did that a couple of years ago. Sorry, we've got a sponsorship deal we're trying to work out, and that does include the soccer field, but this does not, this is just quad fields.
And the two bigger fields were done last year?
Yeah.
So this, this is the four, the Pee-wee fields, the Harold North Field, and the Jim Pierce Field.
All right.
Yeah.
The next item on the list is another, excuse me, a facilities item for $75,000 for the Elections Office HVAC for the control system update. Did you have any questions on that?
I'll just hang that up here for you. And at this time, I just want to be clear. I guess I'm wearing my facilities hat for at least the next week or two, not the Elections Hat standing here regarding this. But at the, just to remind Commissioners, we are operating on a system that uses a 2008 software to control that system, and it doesn't always respond as it should when you try to change temperatures in different areas of the office. And so our concern is at some point, the system is going to fail, and this is something we had talked with the previous Facilities Director about for the last couple of years, and so that's why it was added and put on the radar here with this. And so, you know, once again, it's working today. I believe it will be working tomorrow, but beyond that, I will not stand here and make any promises.
Have you gotten estimates on it already?
The $75,000 estimate that you'll see here on the CIP request was done by the previous Facilities Director, so I'm not sure. I have no documentation myself on what that cost would actually be, and so I can't, I can't stand here and definitively say that that amount is on target, high or low.
Okay.
The next two items we have, we have a $75,000 item for DOC Security System Upgrade, and then a $70,000 item for the Adult Detention Center inmate transport vehicles. Those are both DOC items.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Cole, Shawnee Kennedy, Department of Corrections. $75,000 is a continuous request that we've had each of the last years since I've been the Director. Continuous upgrades that we use for our security system or camera system or intercon system that goes throughout the facility. For 2025, we did have a request for a vehicle. We pushed it off to 2026. I'm working with Major Phelps and Major McCarty that if we can outline the specific type of vehicle, this would be for the juvenile detention for, for transportation, that if we have the funds available, I will work with Jennifer and them and be able to purchase that vehicle this year out of funds we already have, and I've removed this from '26.
How many vehicles do we have for transportation?
For the Department of Corrections?
For Department of Corrections, for transport.
For transport? Oh, gosh. Five?
And the age of these five vehicles?
The ones for the juvenile detention center are very old. I can get you more for that, yeah.
I mean, I know that this has been almost a, I know that the Sheriff's Office is going to ask every year for a large amount of money for vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that it's almost been reoccurring with Department of Corrections asking for funds for a vehicle for the transportation. And I also know that we've kind of ran into some issues before with the vehicle that we were going to purchase, whether or not it would be able to even back into the courthouse Sally Port. Yeah, does vehicles change?
I believe the one that we did get, the last one we bought was the big white van. Do you remember when we bought that?
Five years ago.
Yeah. So, and it does fit in there.
Yeah.
But each year that we've, for the last two or three years where we've asked for a vehicle, we pushed it off.
Well, I'm glad that it fits and that Phelps isn't lowering the, you know, tires just to get it in and out every day.
No, I don't think so.
Commissioners, we also have worked with the Sheriff's Office and passed to get ones there. We have a few that are just for specialized transports that we have received that way.
Okay.
But I would like to be able to look at our budget this year, and if I can, we can make it out of the budget this year, I'd be happy to remove that item.
Our city work crews, do they utilize our vans when they're going out on sites?
No. We have our own van for that, and then the city was part of using some of their vans, yeah.
Would that be a potential cost that we could build into our city work crew fees for the transportation?
I think that, I'd have to look at the contract. I think that they do buy already equipment for that.
Yeah, for the city crews, they provide all the equipment. We just provide the units.
Okay.
And then for our county crew, several years ago, we purchased a van that they use.
All right. Again, I'm just trying to see what all resources we have available to us and partners and such.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
All right. The next couple items that, well, the next item, I guess, that is listed is for park renovations at several of our parks, including Garfield, Shawnee North, and Nana Parks Park. Nana Parks Park? Is that right?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Could I have Tim, I'd ask you, but, Tim, what do these renovations look like? What do you...
Other than Nana's Park, the other two would be primarily playground equipment replacement renovation. Nana's Park, the parking lot there is in bad shape, so, and then also the playground, so it'd be a little bit more.
And Shawnee North was more playground?
Yeah, that's, you know, Shawnee North and Garfield are really the two largest parks that we haven't touched since we started this, you know, deferred maintenance park renovation projects back in 2019. We've hit so many areas, just about everything, all the major areas, but those are two, two of the larger ones that we haven't.
But you say Nana's Park's mainly a parking lot?
The playground equipment is, is a little bit in disrepair, and it falls into that category. You know, it's a, it's a modular system, you know.
Yeah.
The playground, the swings are fine, they're in good shape, but that other system, we don't, we can't get replacement parts for it anymore. So we'd like to upgrade it and then fix the parking lot.
And the play structure at Garfield, is it...
Yeah, it's considerably older.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item we have is for the Event Center for some portable chairs. That is, I believe, their only item they asked for out of 2026.
Man, I knew we talked about this before. How many chairs are we talking about, though? This would be approximately 4,000 chairs, 2,000 for Landon Arena for our arena floor seating, and then 2,000 for Exhibition Hall as banquet chairs. This would also include storage carts and all the other necessary equipment for storing and moving all this, all the chairs as well.
So you're in charge of the setup and tear down of all this stuff. When was the last time we used 4,000 chairs?
We do that quite often. So anytime we do have a concert, there's approximately 1,400 chairs on the floor. Depending on the set, sometimes we can go up to 1,800 for a, for a typical concert at Landon Arena. And then, obviously, any, if we have an event concurrent in Exhibition Hall, 2,000 chairs is pretty easy to go through real quick. Most of our, obviously, seating for dinners over there, about 1,200 to 1,400, but we do have other events where we have conferences with seating areas for presentations and things that happen at the same time as we have events going on in both buildings, basically.
So the, the times that I've gone to banquets over there, it seems that there are chairs brought in from other sources?
Correct.
How common is that?
It's fairly common right now because our chairs that we do have are, are not what people would find usable for a formal banquet. This chair would alleviate that. It's not a formal chair, but it's a much more appealing chair that could be used for a less formal banquet, which we do have quite a few of those events. So this year, for example, we had Stormont Vale Hospital use the facility for their employee awards banquets. They had to rent chairs to bring in because our red plastic bucket chairs just do not fit anybody's needs for a banquet. But it was less formal than the 2030 Gala. So this chair would fill that medium, that middle ground, essentially.
And would we rent them? Like, do people pay extra for the use of the chairs?
Yes. The event itself rents those chairs. When, when we use our chairs, though, we also do have a, a charge that the customer would pay to rent our chairs, essentially, too.
Commissioner Mays?
Yeah.
Matt, just break this down for me.
Yep.
You're asking for $537,000.
Correct.
And $850,000 for 4,000 chairs.
Mm-hmm.
Using my calculator, that comes out to $134,000 a chair.
Yes.
I know you've got some equipment, such as the, the things that you move it on and whatnot, but Menards is selling a 400-pound capacity folding chair for $26.69 right now.
Yep. So unfortunately, for specifically Landon Arena, that's where the majority of this cost comes from. So these chairs have to be a very specific type for fire code reasons. So all these chairs have to interlock and physically connect together. Otherwise, we have to decrease our occupancy on the arena floor by over 50%. So with the style of chair that we use, we can accommodate a three-square-foot-per-person rule. If we didn't have chairs like this, and they were just any regular folding chair or a chair like this...
The $26.69.
Then, then we have half of the, half of the capacity in Landon Arena on the physical floor because we'd have to accommodate for seven square foot per person.
Okay.
The, the chair, the 2,000 chairs that we're asking for, for Exhibition Hall are much less in, in cost because they're not what we would call gangable. So those are just loose chairs because we have so much space and not the physical requirements of trying to fit as many occupants on the floor for a concert where we can make more money.
So that's a life-safety code issue that...
It is. It is. So if the chairs don't interconnect and lock together, then they're considered a movable object. And if there's a movable object, then people can pick them up and move them wherever they want, and then you have more, you know, people in fire exit lanes and stuff like that. So that's why these chairs are designed this way and specific for an arena setting.
And there's not a clip you can buy that just connects them?
No. No. It has an actual locking mechanism on the legs that interlock it together, which, when put in a whole row, eliminates any chair from being removed.
Commissioners, I remember working security at a Marilyn Manson concert, being very glad that no one could pick up the chairs.
So how, what about the chairs in Heritage Hall? We just did the remodel of Heritage Hall. Are those chairs being replaced as well? Is that a chair?
We actually did replace the chairs as part of our 2024 CIP for the Heritage Hall remodel, so we did buy 650, roughly, new white chairs for weddings and more formal ceremonies up there. And people have loved them.
And those are movable chairs, though?
Correct.
Because they're in a banquet setting or...
Yeah, they're sitting around a table. They're not in a theater-style setting.
So i-if we were to prioritize between the chairs for Exhibition Hall and the chairs for Landon Arena, and say we wanted to split this cost, which is the higher priority at this point?
I believe Landon Arena would be the highest priority. And then I can split that cost out for you and get you harder numbers for Landon versus Exhibition. But I believe that Landon would be, Exhibition Hall, it's a hard-plastic chair that we use for conferences, so the, the chairs that we currently have in Landon are padded, and after 38 years, 37 years of, of use, they're showing the wear on those, on those padded chairs.
Yeah, and I would agree. The hockey announcement, I was there, and you had some of those out, and there was one that, in particular, that I wish maybe would have stayed in the closet, but they are pretty bad-looking, so I'm with you on that, so, okay. It'd be good to get the separated cost up.
Sure. I can break that out for you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Quick question for you. Would you like to continue in the cap outlay column and talk about new debt items later, or do you want to stay in the priority order?
Let's just keep going.
Yeah, let's just, let's just keep going on cap outlay.
Sounds great. So the next, next two items are from the Sheriff's Office, one for their pursuit-rated vehicles at $550,000, and one for the garage equipment and tech updates at $100,000. Did you have questions?
This chair would alleviate that. It's not a formal chair, but it's a much more appealing chair that could be used for a less formal banquet, which we do have quite a few of those events. So this year, for example, we had Stormont Vale Hospital use the facility for their employee awards banquets. They had to rent chairs to bring in because our red plastic bucket chairs just do not fit anybody's needs for a banquet, but it was less formal than the 2030 Gala. So there, this chair would fill that medium, that middle ground, essentially.
And would we rent them? Like, do people pay extra for the use of the chairs?
Yes, the event itself rents those chairs. When, when we use our chairs, though, we also do have a, a charge that the customer would pay to rent our chairs essentially, too.
Commissioner Mays?
Yeah.
Matt, just break this down for me.
Yep.
You're asking for $537,000.
Correct.
And 850 for 4,000 chairs.
Mm-hmm.
Using my calculator, that comes out to $134 a chair. I know you've got some equipment, such as the, the things that you move it on and whatnot, but Menards is selling a 400-pound capacity folding chair for $26.69 right now.
Yep. So unfortunately for specifically Landon Arena, that's where the majority of this cost comes from. So these chairs have to be a very specific type for fire code reasons. So all these chairs have to interlock and physically connect together. Otherwise, we have to decrease our occupancy on the arena floor by over 50%. So with the style of chair that we use, we can accommodate a three-square-foot-per-person rule. If we didn't have chairs like this and they were just any regular folding chair or a chair like this.
For $26.69.
Then it, then we have half of the
On sale now.
Half of the capacity in Landon Arena on the physical floor because we'd have to accommodate for seven square foot per person.
Okay.
The, the chair, the 2,000 chairs that we're asking for, for Exhibition Hall are much less in, in cost because they're not what we would call gangable. So those are just loose chairs because we have so much space and not the physical requirements of trying to fit as many occupants on the floor for a concert where we can make more money.
So it's a life safety code issue that?
It is. It is. So if the chairs don't interconnect and lock together, then they're considered a movable object. And if there's a movable object, then people can pick them up and move them wherever they want, and then you have more, you know, people in fire exit lanes and stuff like that. So that's why these chairs are designed this way and specific for an arena setting.
And there's not a clip you can buy that just connects them?
No, no. It has an actual locking mechanism on the legs that interlock it together, which, when put in a whole row, eliminates any chair from being removed.
Commissioners, I remember working security at a Marilyn Manson concert, being very glad that no one could pick up the chairs.
So how, what about the chairs in Heritage Hall? We just did the
Yeah.
remodel of Heritage Hall. Are those chairs being replaced as well? Is that what you're?
We actually did replace the chairs as part of our 2024 CIP for the Heritage Hall remodel. So we did buy 650 roughly new white chairs for weddings and more formal ceremonies up there. And people have loved them.
And those are movable chairs, though?
Correct, correct.
Because they're in a banquet setting or?
Yeah, they're sitting around a table. They're not in a theater-style setting.
So i- if we were to prioritize between the chairs for Exhibition Hall and the chairs for Landon Arena, and say we wanted to split this cost, which is the higher priority at this point?
I believe Landon Arena would be the highest priority. And then I, I can split that cost out for you and get you harder numbers for Landon versus Exhibition. But I believe that Landon would be, Exhibition Hall, it's a hard plastic chair that we use for conferences, so the, the chairs that we currently have in Landon are padded. And after 38 years, 37 years of, of use, they're showing the wear on those, on those padded chairs.
Yeah, and I would agree. The hockey announcement, I was there and you had some of those out, and there was one that, in particular, that I wish maybe would have stayed in the closet. But they are pretty bad-looking, so.
Yeah.
I'm with you on that, so, okay. It'd be good to get the separated cost up.
Sure, I can break that out for you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Quick question for you. Would you like to continue in the cap outlay column and talk about new debt items later? Or do you want to stay in the priority order?
Let's just keep going.
Yeah, let's just
Cap outlay?
Let's just keep going on cap outlay.
Sounds great. So the next item, next two items are from the sheriff's office. One for their pursuit rated vehicles at $550,000 and one for the garage equipment and tech updates at $100,000. Did you have questions?
Any questions?
I don't think so.
So the pursuit rated vehicles, we talk about every year. I, I guess, you know, that's probably not much to talk about there. The garage equipment and tech updates, is that for the current garage or your potential new garage at the building at 21st and Topeka?
Great question. It's, it's for the potential move.
Okay.
Not knowing for sure when that move's going to happen, we just didn't want to get caught with no money for equipment that may be needed that we won't be able to transfer, et cetera.
So we'd be basically putting this into a fund at this point and hanging on to it until that time comes, or?
Well, our hope is that we'll move in '26, but if, if that's not anticipated, then absolutely it can be removed altogether. We just, with not knowing when that potential move will happen, we just didn't, we thought it would be prudent to go ahead and budget some money for the potential costs of, of equipment, et cetera.
Okay. Are we getting closer to knowing, though, when that might happen? I don't know.
I have no idea.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
How many pursuit vehicles do you anticipate being able to purchase for this amount?
I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
The pursuit vehicles?
Yes.
How many could you get for this 550?
Approximately 10.
Approximately 10?
That is, that's, that's our goal every year, just the, the amount of miles that we drive.
And how many total do you have of these? Do you, do you know how many? I'm just kind of figuring out what a replacement.
An approximate number we have of pursuit vehicles right now is right around 120.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We, he could probably stay up here. I'm sorry if you would like him to, because we have two, the last two items are both the same ranking. One is for the sheriff's range target refresh, and one is for the window replacements in the administrative building. Did you have questions on either of those?
I don't know that I have. I, I think you might be off the hook. It doesn't appear anybody's got any questions, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, pardon me. As to the window replacement here in this building, this was a request that was made by the previous facilities director, just essentially based on the fact that these windows are not double-pane windows in this building, so their efficiency is less than desirable. And so the idea would be that by being able to replace those windows, you'd have a, you know, better operating HVAC equipment, a system, and save money in the long run. It's my understanding for this request, but once again, as I'm saying, this was a request made previously by the prior director.
At the present time, are they keeping out the water?
As far as I know, Commissioner, yes, they are.
Then that's probably where they need to stay for the next year.
Yeah, I understand. Good enough.
I, I believe, I think the only time they ever took in any water was in the counselor's office, one year, maybe in IT. But I think that was one of those
Feels like I'm always taking water.
Thank you. But yeah, I think both times that it has happened has been a very unusual occurrence, but. That brings us to the end of these. Are there any, is there anything that you would like me to, to do or anything that you would like to have me defer until a future year at this time? I know we're not taking any votes, but just as a preliminary plan to try and get somewhere around our $2.5 million that we actually are looking to have approved.
I don't know that I'm ready to take any action. Are you?
No, I mean.
Were we going to discuss Family Park or Dornwood complex renovations or?
Those are going to be under the
New debt.
New debt discussion, so we're going to go to that next. But I mean, we're looking at $6.4 million of requests for a $2.5 million budgeted.
But if we remove $3 million from elections and take that from reserves, if that is advisable by our audit finance director, that takes us down to $3 million, and then we would need to be looking to take off about a half million dollars.
Sorry, I'm just moving a couple things here so you could see more what that would look like. Since no one has planned on any grants, I can just shift them over here. There, that is what that would look like.
Can you take off the last, the windows and the target refresh? Just since they are at the end of our list. There you are. That takes us to $2,500,000.
That gets us to $2,900,000.
Okay, $2,900,000, okay.
Well, then we'll see what Matt has to say about those chairs. That might save us a little bit to defer off also.
And, and I don't know what you're wanting to do, but you guys talked about the, whether or not there was potential for the garage in 2026, or if that's more of a 2027, I don't know. But that's another item you guys talked about, potentially future.
You took off the windows?
Yeah. Okay, should we move on to the new debt requests over there?
Okay. The items that were listed as potential new debt needs were the Parks and Rec West Edge Road Mill and Overlay. I think Tim talked about that a bit during his presentation. I don't know if you have any questions for him on that? Or for Kurt, or for, I don't know. I think, I don't think Kurt was here to hear it during Tim's presentation, but I think he, he had open arms to Kurt for his advice and/or labor, is what I believe he said.
I mean, I, I look at this as a project that probably needs to get done at some point. I, I don't know that bonding it, I mean, we do a lot of road projects without bonding, and, I mean, I don't know.
I think this is one of these weird situations where we talked about it during Kurt's, during Kurt's time. This is West, West Edge Road, whenever we gained West Edge Road, I don't know how that happened or when that happened, but the road was apparently broken in half, north and south. And the north part belongs to one department and the south part belongs to another department. So it may just be one of these items that we need to figure out how we make the whole road be belong to a department, and that might clear up the whole situation.
So is the south end considered county road then, or what, you say it's two different?
One of the, I think, one of them falls under the responsibility of Parks and Rec to maintain, and the other falls under the responsibility of Public Works to maintain. I, I came after this all.
Sort of like Gage Park being half the city, half the county.
Yeah.
We, we have the power to change that here, though. We could just make that one road. I mean, to me, that just seems.
I think everyone agrees it seems odd and.
Are we turning?
Yes.
Let's have the appraiser go into the GIS and change it real quick. Just flip a coin and.
Yeah, so, because I would agree. I think this is one of those situations where if this was in Public Works, Public Works has some funding available to them that they would be able to utilize over time to fit this into the plan. Parks and Rec is kind of, they focus more on parks and rec. Thanks, thank you.
Could you repeat that?
But, you know, it's, so, I mean, it just is kind of a
It almost rhymes.
It's kind of a, you know, that'd be like, it's like when audit finance would have to come up with their own computers. It's just not something I'm, I'm, it's not in my budget, it's not in my plan. So if I would have to come up with them, it would be a weird one-time request for me. So that's kind of why this is here. It's kind of a weird one-time request, and it does get shoved down the road, if you will, a few times.
Well, so Lake Shawnee's got plenty of other roads also, right? There's an East Edge Road. Do you guys maintain that?
We do, we do.
The answer was yes.
Thank you.
For the, for the record.
Still the rec, yes.
So, okay, any other questions?
I guess not.
Again, I think it needs to get done. I just don't know if bonding for it is, is the proper way to do that.
I would agree. I just it just seems like more of a maintenance item.
We have Family Park facility, well, the next several are, all the rest, all the rest belong, is that right?
Looks like.
Yes, all the rest of the items that are listed belong to Parks and Rec, so Tim can answer all of the questions.
Just, I won't read them twice.
So I, let's talk about Family Park first, it's top on the list. A good chunk of that is the Golf Course Clubhouse.
Correct.
Which has other funding sources as well, right? So I know that Green's fees would take decades to pay for that. But I also know that we've got possibly a commitment from a private donor. Is this in addition to that, or?
No, this does not reflect that because while we've had a lot of discussions with, with this individual, we have not gotten a, a number yet. I think he's waiting to see if, how serious we are about it and whether we move forward with the project. But it, it does sound like he is willing to donate. We just don't know the number.
I, I also might want to see this broken into two different items because there are multiple pieces to the Family Park renovation, right? There's, there's trails, there's potential for a dog park, you know, some things like that, which, some of that we might be able to get done with other funds. The, the Golf Course Clubhouse, to me, is the big-ticket item that, I mean, you know, we can put in trails. We do trails everywhere, and there's grant funding available for a lot of those and, and things like that as well. But the Golf Course Clubhouse, I think would be good to see that on a separate item, just to have a better sense of, of what we're expecting. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's not a problem. We, we've got it broken down internally so we can update that number to accurately reflect just that project.
Okay.
I think, though, a lot of these projects are going to be falling under more of a bonded nature of which, I don't know that this is the year we take out the bond. I mean, I would love to us to have Dornwood complete, this has only been ongoing now for the last 12 to 15 years with renovation of Dornwood. It may be one of the slowest renovations we've ever done. But bit by bit, just to be able to complete those ball diamonds.
Well, and I guess with, with Dornwood, there's, seems to be, I don't think that, from what we've seen in the past, there's a real great agreement on what needs to be done, right? We, we redid the parking lot.
Correct.
We put the splash pad in, which I know is not part of the ball fields, but it's sort of, kind of all goes together.
That was $800,000 at that time?
You renovated the concessions last year, right? Because they were in really bad shape.
Right.
I've heard that there's some water issues, we need to regrade some things. Is that something that we're doing now, or is this part of that?
We're, well, this would, that would be part of that number. We, it depends on how this plant pans out. If we don't bomb this and try to complete the whole thing, then we'll go in and do some of those things like we're doing now, as we can do it, as we can afford it.
But we're, you described that the lighting has become very precarious, the poles are very precarious.
Yes.
There's issues with just, we're getting to some critical junctures with the functionability of the equipment.
Yeah, that is correct, and you, and you hit the nail on the head. The lights and the light poles specifically are in real bad shape, and that, to replace, we don't have to replace all of them, but I have to replace a good number of them, and that's pretty, that's pretty pricey.
So I, I, I spend probably way more time than I should at baseball complexes, and it seems like the model that was put in out there is there's a lot of smaller poles, right? And you see a lot of these complexes have kind of one giant pole that lights multiple fields. Is that, I mean, is that a possibility out there, that we cut the number of poles?
The situation at Dornwood is that the layout wasn't really designed the way a lot of those complexes are, where they're backed up against each other and that sort of cloverleaf design. We don't have that here, and so that makes that problematic. We can certainly look at that. If there's any sharing that can be done, we'd be happy to do it, but we haven't looked at that yet.
Well, I mean, if, if we're going to spend one and a half million dollars or whatever, you know, what does it cost to change the configuration? Because honestly, if you want to look at that on a map, it does not make any sense, the way that those fields are laid out. And I, I mean, to get to that far field, it's a, it's quite a hike.
Right.
And unnecessarily so, I would say.
Yeah, and then, and unfortunately, the, the two fields that are in the best shape and the ones that have been renovated are the ones that are the farthest away. So if you were really going to start over, I think you would want to maintain those two and build off of them, and then change the way you access that, that, that complex. So it's a, it's a tough one. We, we, there is a plan that was created back, I believe, in, that would have been 2017 or 2018 that we're loosely following. So, so there was, yeah, that was prior to the spray park being put in.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
How many, how many teams play at Dornwood?
Well, I think there was, there was around 30 some odd teams that played there last summer, if I believe, like 36, it comes to mind. Don't, don't quote me on that.
Could, could Betis handle 30 teams more?
I don't know. I don't know that off the top of my head.
It's a mile away or so.
Yeah.
You know, we're doing all these renovations to, to Betis Fields. It, it just makes me wonder how much money should we put in there for 30 teams, so we might be able to handle it over at?
Well, and you bring up a good point, because some of these are girls, you know, so we could be playing at Invista and Betis, so we could split them up, you know, and I don't know whether or not we can accommodate, but that, we'd certainly be happy to look into that.
And maybe Dornwood becomes more of a practice facility, so is a shortage of ball fields to practice on.
I don't know. There, you're, I'm willing to look, but I think you're going to be pushing on capacity. I don't know.
I don't know.
Okay.
Anything else for Tim while he's up here?
Not that I can think of.
Not directly, no.
The boathouse renovation? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just hang out, just hang out.
Just hang out there for a second. What does that project look like? What are we, what are we talking about?
Well, a few years ago, we applied for a grant that we did not receive, and, and so we put a little time and effort into what that facility could look like if it was renovated. I think it would primarily, in our minds, be used, like many of the other buildings at the lake, for rental purposes. However, as I mentioned in my budget presentation, the Topeka Rowing Association uses that, so we'd like to maintain that relationship and, and try to figure out a way where we can accommodate both reservation needs and, and their needs. As I mentioned before, it's just sits in such an incredible spot on the lake, and it is vastly underused. And it's quite honestly just, I, in my mind, sitting there decaying over time. And it's, it's a, I guess, an untapped jewel in our mind. I, if, if it was renovated and made available for reservations, it would be used
Constantly.
I mean, constantly. It would, it would be the premier spot on the lake. I mean, constantly. It would, it would be the premier spot on the lake for that.
I agree. And the Grange Hall, they've, they've got quite a bit of money.
They do. I, I think they've, I.
I'm talking about the friends of.
The friends of Ward Mead. I know that, I know they've talked around, I think, $500,000 for sure. There might even be a little more.
More than that now.
If, if we get, you know, to that point. We did get some preliminary plans made, which we think look fantastic. We, we might be able to pare those down a little bit and make this whole thing a little bit more affordable.
I think that could be scaled back and still have a.
Yeah.
Quality facility. So, all right.
Well, let's talk about the biggest one on here.
Yeah.
Shawnee North Community Center.
Yeah.
So obviously, the, the existing building up there is falling apart. And it, you know, to be quite frank, it's not really functional for what we use it for, for what anybody would have a use for it. Cool old building, but it's in bad, bad shape. 20 million's a lot of money, though.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
What does that get us?
Absolutely is. I think if a 20 million, in my mind, $20 million gets you what I would consider a state-of-the-art recreation center. You know, multiple gyms, not, not a tournament, since, you know, facility. We're not talking about bringing, building 10 gyms and trying to lure in big tournaments. We would, we would program it. We would fill it with our programs. You know, since, since COVID, we've really lost access to the majority of the school gyms. So we rely only on the gyms we have for our programs, which has really blocked us down. We really haven't been able to grow those like we'd like to. Our other community centers, we've made some investments at Oakland and Hillcrest. And they, and they function fine, I think, for that, for community centers. But I see a recreation center as something different. Be more active. We'd have more programs. I could see indoor turf area. I could see indoor walking track above it. You know, that's what I envisioned for something with this price tag.
Would we maintain the existing building since it is historic in some natures? Maybe for some other programming. I know that they do adult pottery and different.
Right.
Educational programming.
Well, I'll be real honest with you. I, that wouldn't be my first choice. It is a historical building. It's not on the registry, but there is some history to it. But it, as Commissioner Mays mentioned, it just doesn't function well as a public facility. It's, it's not great from an ADA accessibility standpoint. We've had a lot of plumbing issues there. There's the, for lack of a better term, decks on both sides with the stairs that are decaying, that are, that we've got basically cordoned off. We don't allow people to go on those. So it isn't a facility that, if we were able to do something like this, that I would want to continue to operate, if I could, just being blunt. Not necessarily saying we tear it down, but I don't know that it's something we want to continue to. We definitely, I don't think it's something we want to continue to program classes.
And, and I'm just personally speaking, I wouldn't want to spend millions of dollars to fix up an old building that's not going to be functional.
Right.
I mean, that's, it, like I said, it's a beautiful building. It was at one time.
Yeah, it's neat.
But it's, it's probably reached its life expectancy. The only concern I have now is if, if we were going to build a $20 million recreational facility, I don't know that that's the place to do it, just because, I mean, just from my house, it's almost a half hour drive.
Yeah.
To get there. And so it's pretty far away from where the majority, the population of Shawnee County lives. And so I almost feel like.
Yeah. But at the same time.
Something has to go there, but I don't know.
If you lived at Hunter's Ridge, it is a 20-minute drive to get out to the pickleball courts at Family Park, if not longer.
I'm not saying that we don't need to do something, but I, I don't know that we need to make it our premier facility.
I don't think we're talking about a premier facility. We're talking about a replacement facility. Because if anything, I mean, what do we have north of the river? I mean, if you were to say north of, well, north of 24, that's probably a better boundary. This is the only facility that we have that is north of 24 Highway. We have the pool, aquatic facility, and then the community center with the soccer and football fields there. And ball diamonds there. But realistically, that's it. We don't have any other investments, any other programming that we do north of 24 Highway, all the way. I mean, until you get to Rossville, we have, you know, and we maintain the Rossville Pool.
Yeah.
But outside of the Rossville Pool, this is it, north of 24 Highway. So you're talking about half of the county has one facility.
True.
I think you're both making great points. I would just add the Shawnee North, the Aquatic Center. And we have pools all over town and it is our number one attended pool by law.
And there are other amenities at that park. There are, there is a pool, there are ball fields, there is a nice trail, there are pickleball courts. Now let's talk about Shawnee South Park.
It's a great park.
Which doesn't have much.
Absolutely.
And when you look at Montero, they're on an island out there too, and there's not much happening. I mean, that, and we're not, there's nothing on here about spending any money.
Right.
In Montero. And that's something that I've been pushing for, for the last several years, didn't make it on the list.
Yeah, I apologize for that. We, we did, and I believe I did share this with you earlier, that we've gotten quotes on doing possibly a new basketball court there and a couple of pickleball courts, just a little complex like that. It's not, not terribly high price, so I think that's something we can do. But you're right, it didn't make this list.
I absolutely agree. Montero is underserved as well, whether it's with a spray park or pickleball courts or basketball courts or, you know, just anything outside of the golf course and the community, you know, the.
Velma Paris.
Velma Paris Community Center that's maintained by the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah.
And then the midget track.
Yeah, Quarter Midgets.
I might just add.
Track, not midgets track. Thank you.
I might just add that, that the, the community center in Shawnee North was never designed as a recreation center. It was, it had a whole different purpose in, in its day. So it's not like it's a worn-out recreation center. It's, it's an old building that had a different purpose, so.
Well, we probably, at some point, need to start talking about rice.
Yeah.
Also, because it's maybe not quite as bad as Shawnee North in conditions, but it's not very good either. So.
Yes.
Any other questions for Tim?
I, I do look at the Shawnee North as being an area where we might look to see, again, what community partners, what sponsorship, what things we might be able to do to help offset that, that price tag as a, with a, I mean, again, there might be opportunities there.
Could there be an opportunity to work with the school system where they could use, you know, say you had a double gym in there where they could have practices and things like that?
I don't know. I've not talked with the.
You know, there's just such a demand for gym space anymore, especially during basketball, during the winter season. There's so many sports going on that, maybe, who knows?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've made it to the bottom of the wish list. Is there anything else you guys want to discuss today? Just think it over and before we pick up on Monday, would you like me to put more CIP discussion on the agenda for Monday?
So, I guess maybe one thing we may want to do is, is just look and see if there's anything in future years that you feel need to be moved up in terms of our priorities. Take a look at that, maybe before we get to our next meeting. It's probably not enough time to really do it right now. But I think it'd be good for us to look at that and see if there's anything that maybe is a higher priority than how it's on the list currently. And, I don't know. Anything else? Well, this is always fun. This was the easy part, though, on, you know, to be honest. We've, now the decisions need to be made, although not today. We're not voting on anything today. So Jennifer, you want to kind of outline the schedule?
Yeah, Monday, the 14th, we will have a resolution that we will be discussing for, and will need to be signed if the commission has an intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. That has to be completed and turned into our county clerk's office before the 20th. So Monday, the 14th, would be our last commission meeting that we have prior to that. So I have that on the agenda for Monday. We still will need to discuss and finalize what your wishes are for cap outlay. And then what your wishes are, we'll start having discussions for the actual budget itself. Everyone has made their presentations for the budget. As it exists today, we are looking at approximately $12 million over our 2025 budget. Part of that is due to the additional payroll, which is estimated at about $4 million now. And as we talked about earlier, we have 3.7 million in reserves that we are going to allocate to help lessen the blow of that additional payroll. So I think I'm speaking for each of the commissioners who have spoken to me privately. If any department has any ability to shave anything off of their budget that they submitted, I think you guys would be more than happy to accept that type of an amendment. But that is where our budget sits today.
Okay. All right. We done talking about this?
Yeah, I think so.
I am.
Okay. So we look at our next items. I didn't have anybody signed up for public comment unless there's a sheet in the back.
Or you signed up for public comment?
Nope. Is there anyone wanting to speak? Were you hoping to make public comment today? Or no?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Shamika Kingsons. I am president of Historic Old Town Neighborhood Improvement Association. Basically, in a nutshell, just trying to condense the timeline. I've been a part of the NIA for the last five years and in learning about our neighborhood and the history of our neighborhood, it has come to my attention on numerous occasions that we are still lacking a playground, park space that many of our NIA, all of our NIA siblings, I call them, other neighborhoods that are low and moderate income, already have. I came out today to listen to what the plans were for 2026. We have a person, a private property that was sold through the tax sale and we were not informed of that. I know that that is not typically the protocol of the county to inform neighborhoods of what is going up on the tax sale. Had we had that conversation, it would have saved us $25,000 to be able to enter into conversation with Shawnee County Parks and Rec about a future playground. We have a Dreams One designation. That means that we have 1.47 million dollars that we need to allocate within our neighborhood to try and make it revitalized and a place that people want to live. And consistently, the last three years that I have been, or the last three cycles that I have worked on this proposal for Dreams One, people want playgrounds. The area that is in question is filled with low-income housing, packed with families that have no place to go. Kids are playing on their patios. Kids are playing in the streets. And we are just asking for some consideration after 20 years of trying to get our neighborhood plan worked through. And the things that people were looking for in 2003 are still the same things that people are looking for in 2025. So I am just kind of desperate to ask for deep consideration. We cannot compete against private investors. We don't get $25,000 to do whatever we want to do in our neighborhood. Other people outside of Kansas get that opportunity to tell us what we should want. And that is infuriating. I am just hoping that whether we can get on the 2026 budget or maybe it's 2027, just a final answer that I can take back to my neighborhood so that we know how to go forward. That's all I'm asking for. It's a yes or a no. Do you want to do it? Do you not? That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Shamika.
Okay. And we will move on to administrative communications. Any administrative communications today? Wow. Okay. Okay, then we'll, we'll move on to executive session. We do have a need for two executive sessions today. And I would make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel at the sheriff's office and the administration team. And the, that one, maybe 10, 10 minutes. And then the second one would be for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be team privilege in the attorney-client relationship. And that would be specifically to review a township contract. That one would probably be 10 minutes as well. So we'll do 20 minutes. Let's give everybody a couple of minutes to get in there. So we will begin at 11:10. We will be out at 11:30. That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner Cook. Those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes three to zero. We will be in executive session. All right, we are back from executive session. No action was taken, so we are adjourned.